Or you'll hear the buzzer. I guess you're turning.
I have a few, ma'am.
And at which time Sylvia, if you could please just wrap up your comments at that time.
I've never done this, so.
Don't be nervous.
Okay. Good morning. Sylvia Salier, 362 Merrill. Good morning, y'all. City Council. I live in Saxon Heights One, which is going to be celebrating 100 years in about four years. It was platted in 1926. Many stories are to be told from the surrounding area. And we'd like to see us adopting Saxon Heights and Oak Park, which is SHOP, if you take it as an acronym. Visitors, industry, and Delmar West students need to know our neighborhoods are old but cared for. And if you can please consider the precedence of enacting the historic preservation. I'd like to see it happen from the outside in because when you come in, you see our neighborhoods. People coming in from the airport will see a lot of the historic preservation district signs once you adopt this as a preservation district. Saxon Heights and the surrounding neighborhoods are highways, trains, industry, Delmar West, CCISD, and we'd like to see some of them share the brunt of the cost to have some of this happen. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. And then next on the telephone, we have Din Huang.
Yes?
Are you... Okay, go ahead and proceed with your comment, please.
It's my turn now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Good morning. My name is Du Yan Ha. We have a business running at a short-term rental. As my house located at 9434 Waxwing Street, Corbix Christie, Texas, 78418, which is Unit 4, Unit Digital. A few days ago, I received a letter from City of Corbix Christie give us two citations based on affected on March 15, 2020, that City of Corbix Christie not allowing to do any short-term rental on the single-family district, which my house under that step. So I'm asking today, is there any way that you can reconsidering it, my home? Because this is type like a business income for us. We bought, retired, we don't work. And we doing really well with this home. We have mostly booking two to three weeks throughout the whole month. And we have five-star rating on our AMB short-term rental. And we never had complaint from our neighborhood or from our neighbor. So, and all my guests staying at my home, they love it. And they all give five-star rating. So I'm asking today, is there any way we can reconsidering giving back the short-term rental for my home? Because this is a big part of the income I get from running a business like everybody else. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ha, very much. Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Okay. Thank you. So next we'll go into, well, the council will actually go into executive session on item number one. Our Texas Government Code sections 551.071 and 551.074. So we will return shortly.
Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting and go into section E, which is individual consideration items. This is a one-reading ordinance appointing Jacqueline Del Yano Chapa as the presiding judge of the municipal court of record in the city of Corpus Christi, Texas for the remainder of the current term of office, and appointing David Walsh as a full-time judge of the municipal court of record in the city of Corpus Christi, Texas for the remainder of the current term of office. And Chairman, if you'd like to say a few words prior to us passing this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you know, we had an announcement a few weeks ago that Judge Loeb, who is our current presiding judge from municipal court, was going to be retiring to go and spend some more time with her family. We took this opportunity to open up the position for somebody to come in to take the position of the presiding judge. We opened it up to the public, and as a result, we got several very good applications from some very qualified individuals that were interested in taking this position. So we're very fortunate as a city to have the options that we had for the person coming in to serve as the new presiding municipal court judge. There are a lot of challenges that come with that, but we think that the recommendation that we have will be ready for that challenge and will be able to take us to the next steps to get us back to where we need to be. You know, with the challenges we had from COVID and from some other things, it has put the municipal court kind of at a disadvantage and put them behind in a lot of areas. So we feel very strongly that the candidate that we have selected is somebody that can get us back to where we need to be and do a good job for our citizens.
Great. Thank you, Chairman, and I want to thank you for your leadership on this committee and, of course, your committee members for all the time and the effort and discussion I'm sure that you all had. This is a critical, it's a critical position, both. So, and thank you, thank you, thank you both for serving, and so we wish you luck moving forward. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the ordinance appointing Jacqueline Chapa as a presiding judge for the remainder of this municipal court term at a salary of $126,000, and to appoint David Walsh as a full-time municipal court judge for the remainder of the term at a salary of $100,000. Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion or questions? Okay, then, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Hold on a second. Do we have public comment? Any public comment here for this item? Okay, there being no public comment, all in favor, say no. Okay, the motion carries. Congratulations, judges. Thank you, and thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for saying everything.
Pardon? Would you like to say a few words? You're very welcome to. Absolutely. Yes.
Let's just start by apologizing for our informal dress. We didn't know we're going to be here today.
I want to thank everybody for the time and consideration that you have given us, and thank you for the appointment. I think that we really have a great team here at municipal court. We both look very, and I don't mean to speak for you, and I won't, but we look forward to working really hard in conjunction, hand in hand, with Mr. Hernandez, and we are gonna do dynamic things. I'm excited, so.
Thank you all very much. It's been an awesome time being a part-time judge. Thank you for the confidence in moving me to now to a full-time judge, and I just want to wholeheartedly congratulate you all on an awesome pick for a presiding judge.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, well, that will move us into section F, briefings. I'm sorry? Oh, okay, so we're gonna go item number three, City Council Workshop Discussion Regarding the Proposed Historic Preservation Plan. And Ms. Nina Nixon will be presenting, correct? Thank you.
Thank you.
For our PowerPoint to be pulled up, and we do have a copy of the PowerPoint for you. If you don't have your preservation plan, you would like a copy, we do have extra plans as well, so.
Yes.
Okay, Al, Raymond, our director, will be helping with that.
I'll take my turn. Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. I'm Nina Nixon Mendez, Assistant Director with the Development Services Department, and this is a workshop on the proposed City of Corpus Christi Historic Preservation Plan. If adopted, the plan would become an element of Plan CC, our comprehensive plan, and would replace the former preservation plan, which dates back 18 years. So why a new plan? The first plan was adopted in 1976, and it was amended in the 1990s, and finally in 2004. And just like many plans, like our area development plans, an update to the plan was overdue. And we did receive a matching grant through the Certified Local Government Program and the Texas Historic Commission to undertake the work on the project. And the planning process took place between October 2020, September 21.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. I'm gonna turn it up a little bit. I just don't know how.
Maybe I can speak up. Why don't I, I'll use my big voice.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Closer, yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Size, yes, sir.
I love your voice.
So, in the next couple of slides, I'll cover the history and the current state of preservation in Corpus Christi, and then hit the highlights of the plan. And you might recognize, well, if we go back to the first image, there we go, you might recognize Artesian Park. And this is one of our local landmarks, and this is the site of the Artesian well that was drilled by General Zachary Taylor and his encampment. There were, I think, about 4,000 troops there to defend the Republic of Texas. And to me, what's interesting is in 1854, the land was deeded by H.L. Kenny to the city for a park, and this park is one of the earliest in Texas to have been given by an individual to the public. So a very interesting history about that site. So here we have a brief overview of the state of historic preservation. The Landmark Commission was established in 1974, and also historic zoning and the regulation of exterior work and procedures for demolition for landmarks were established in the zoning code. And in 1976, council adopted the first preservation plan. The first plan articulated the role of the Landmark Commission. The first plan articulated the role of the Landmark Commission, criteria for designating landmarks, the inventory, historic resources. It emphasized keeping historic buildings in use, implementing the plan through ordinance, and it discussed funding sources for preservation. And the plan was later updated in the 1990s and later in 2004. And in 1999, council designated Artesian Park or Bayview Cemetery. Many of the properties at Heritage Park and the Gruyere Westergren House as local landmarks. And there have been various planning efforts for historic preservation. And these are outlined on Page 13 through 15 of the plan, which primarily emphasized surveying various neighborhoods to identify historic resources, and then, of course, the creation of Heritage Park. And since that time, only a small number of landmarks were designated. And it just really wasn't a priority. To date, we only have 26 local landmarks designated since 1976. And that's, you know, over a period of 46 years. So, you know, we still have a lot of work to do here in Corpus Christi. The, one thing I do want to mention on Page 32 and 33 of the plan, it sort of highlights in the plan's community surveys some of the landmarks that the community had interest in, as well as 12 neighborhoods for possible consideration as historic. There we go. So in recent years, the city has taken steps to strengthen its preservation program through the effort of the Downtown Management Main Streets Program. We've done.
I'm sorry, I was gonna move it because it's uncomfortable. Your papers like that.
Thank you, Rebecca. I appreciate it. Through the Main Street Program that focuses on preserving, promoting, and revitalizing downtown districts. So that's a tremendous asset to our preservation program through the Downtown Management District. And then in 2017, the DMD, through our Certified Local Government Program, undertook a survey of historic resources in the downtown. And there, you know, I looked back through that survey the other day, and there were 280 resources that were documented. And they, in the survey, they commented that 37 of those sites could be eligible for local designation and 33 could be eligible for National Register designation. So we have just some great, great potential there. The Landmark Commission also reviewed the nomination of Old Bayview Cemetery to the National Register in 2020, and that has been listed on the National Register. Also, we've created a database and have geocoded properties that have been surveyed over the years. And we have a database of 2,200 properties, which is published on our website. So if you go to our website, it's cctexas.com/landmark. And that has an interactive program where you can look at those surveys, as well as our current designations, both local and state and national. We did embark on our preservation plan in 2021. And as part of the planning process, we did have three public workshops. We had stakeholder interviews, as well as a community opinion survey. With the survey, we had 752 respondents. And about half of those individuals, a little bit more than half, said that they wanted to become more involved in historic preservation. So we do have certainly interest from the community in support of preservation. We also presented the draft plan to the Downtown Management District and we, which did provide a resolution of support for the plan. We presented to Representatives, Associated General Contractors South Texas, the American Institute of Architects, and the Development Services Task Force. This was back in October, and we received favorable consideration. Okay, our current historic preservation ordinance. So one aspect of implementing historic preservation, of course, is the preservation ordinance. And in order to improve our city's capacity to undertake preservation, there have been several issues that have been identified that we should address, the need for better organization of the preservation provisions in the Unified Development Code, adding a purpose section, establishing options for administrative review of projects, so that can help, you know, facilitate the process. Today, we do use the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation for our review criteria of projects. Many cities adopt additional localized design standards to supplement this review, so that's something that we could certainly look at. And then also, the need to strengthen the demolition by neglect provisions in our code. We do have a provision in our code, but, for example, many codes specify exactly what elements of a building must be maintained. Okay, so our current Landmark Commission, you know, the Landmark Commission was established by council in 1974. And the Landmark Commission's role is limited to consultation or advisory. If the Landmark Commission denies a certificate of appropriateness for exterior work being done or for demolition, the owner. Go back one slide, thank you. There we go. The owner may simply wait 90 days or up to 300 days for a stay of demolition and proceed with their project. The commission is made up of 11 members, and we do have a full board this year. I think just recently, you made three appointments to the board, so that fills out our board. The membership currently in our ordinance is preferred, but not required, to have the experience in one or more of the following: historian, licensed real estate salesperson, architect, structural or civil engineer, title surgeon, property surveyor, or a member-at-large. And so implementing required categories would ensure our commission is made up of qualified individuals with expertise and the need to serve the community. And then we also need to clarify what kind of training is needed for our commission. And we do have some required trainings through our Certified Local Government status with the Texas Historic Commission. So the National Park Service defines preservation planning as a process that organizes preservation activities in a logical sequence and sets forth principles on what to base preservation planning. And this framework includes a conservation approach, where research and documentation is an ongoing process and there's open public involvement throughout the planning process. And so using this framework, the preservation plan strives to integrate historic preservation activities into the city's broader planning efforts, identify how preservation can promote heritage tourism, preservation-based economic development, and heritage education. And finally, how preservation can be utilized as an urban design strategy to promote walkability, place-making, income and land use diversity, and neighborhood characters. So this could be a particular landmark building or icon that people identify with, a walkable streetscape, an important urban corridor. It could be an important urban corridor or an important neighborhood landmark famous by a person, place, or event. The Preservation Plan is a blueprint for how preservation can be enacted in Corpus Christi. It is a guide for a preservation program that could be implemented with the help of historic preservation officer. This slide outlines the contents of the plan. You have the introduction, which covers the purpose and objectives, the methodology, which provides some of what we've reviewed to date, the overview of the current state of preservation, the community meetings, the community opinion survey and findings, a summary of the community input, the vision statement plus three broad goals. We have 16 strategies that are defined in the plan, as well as action steps for the implementation. And then there are numerous case studies of best practices that are illustrated throughout the plan. And keep in mind, if we were to bring forth changes to the preservation provisions of the Unified Development Code or the city code, that would be a completely separate process. So the adoption of this plan, it would just, you know, it'd be a guideline or a blueprint that could set forth actions for future implementation. So the next slide has our vision statement in the plan. So by 2030, historic preservation in Corpus Christi will support a vibrant multicultural community enjoyed by residents and visitors alike with a thriving downtown, diversified economy, updated infrastructure, and equitable investment in new and legacy neighborhoods. Image of Star Street looking north, and it's a great walkable street. Many of the buildings have these wonderful awnings for shade. Most of the buildings are contiguous and, you know, exhibit interesting design elements. So this is a great street. So this slide illustrates our three goals for the plan. And I'm going to highlight just two strategies under each goal, but there are multiple strategies, so I'll try to summarize those. But if you do have any questions about specific strategies, I certainly will be glad to entertain those questions. Goal one is to build city capacity for historic preservation. The strategies to build city capacity include having sufficient trained personnel, a strengthened, up-to-date ordinance, Landmark Commission training, a disaster response plan and recovery process for historic properties, and an education awareness program through walking tours. And the two that I would, you know, like to delve into are, number one, hiring a full-time preservation officer. We would like to convert a vacant senior management assistant position to the historic preservation officer position. Most cities with preservation programs do have a full-time dedicated staff person, and they do have a background or graduate degree in history, architecture, architectural history, or archaeology, and some experience with historic ordinances, resource surveys, National Register nominations, tax incentives, and the like. And this person would be responsible for spearheading the implementation of this plan. Strategy two is to update the historic preservation ordinance. And we've discussed, you know, some of the things we need to look at with respect to our ordinance to have a more updated plan. One aspect of the ordinance that could be considered is adding a protected landmarks and protected historic districts to the ordinance. Currently, as I said, the role is more advisory, but a property owner may want to come in and, you know, voluntarily have their property designated and would want more protection levels, and the same with communities that may want to have a historic district. And so this, what this would do is provide options in preservation. So you would still have maybe one level of protection where it's advisory, and then another, which is, you know, has more regulatory aspects to it. I'm sorry, let me go back. So goal two is to enable community-driven preservation. And one thing I noticed with the work on this historic preservation plan is that we've had a great amount of interest on part of the community, and we do have some individuals here today that have interest in the plan, and they're present. The strategies that are recommended to do this is to improve our website, have a standardized outreach process to the community, looking at a preservation partnership approach, including areas in the city that are underrepresented, and utilizing themes to increase the number of historical markers throughout the city. So I'm going to highlight strategy six, which is to improve the city's historic preservation website. We recently added two interactive maps detailing our designated local, state, and national landmarks. And again, another map which presents around 2,200 historic sites that have been surveyed since the 1990s. And we want to continue to improve the page, and the plan does provide some very specific action steps on what we can do to improve our website. Strategy seven is to improve community outreach and standardize the public engagement process. And one example that we have and that we've initiated for National Preservation Month, which is coming up in May, is the Landmark Commission is hosting a photograph contest through social media, through Facebook and Instagram. And so we're inviting citizens to submit photographs of landmarks in the city. And, you know, it's just a great way to engage the community, and it'll be a people's choice judging on the Facebook page. And so we're, and we would like to display the winners at La Ratama Library and other locations in the city. So again, just creating that awareness and reaching out to the public related to our historic assets. And goal three is to historic, is to support historic preservation as an economic development tool. And this, and this is something, I think, that really contrasts this plan with the previous plans. There was not much emphasis on historic preservation as economic development. And there is such great potential of historic preservation as being an economic development tool. The rehabilitation of historic buildings has multiplier effects. It only creates, not only creates construction jobs, but it attracts tourists, provides space for new businesses, and it serves as a backdrop for community festivals. Incentives for historic rehabilitation, such as our TURIS III incentives, can assist with economic development. That could also be coupled with local tax incentives for outside of the TURIS III district. And these local incentive, incentives could be leveraged with the state and national tax incentives to rehabilitate historic properties. And we're really missing out because, one, one thing that the consultant pointed out in our preservation plan is when you look at other cities in terms of their tax credit projects, utilizing their tax credit projects in their city, she took the top 50 cities, and these cities sort of averaged 27 projects. And currently, we have one project, which is the Nuasis Lofts that utilize the credits. Now, we do have two upcoming projects. But again, we're a little behind on that, and so that's something that we could really promote. And we could position a lot of our historic buildings by getting the National Register listing. And with that listing, again, that could position him for the state and federal tax credits for preservation. And strategy 12 is to update the vacant buildings ordinance. Currently, we have an ordinance in place that requires a standard of maintenance for our downtown vacant buildings. And also, any proposed demolition of the vacant downtown buildings older than 50 years is reviewed by the Landmark Commission. And so we could amend the ordinance to where the Landmark Commission's authority could be binding. Currently, it's a stay of demolition. The ordinance could be expanded beyond the downtown. We could include some of our corridors if we wanted to do that. And we could also consider implementing an annual registration, which would provide a means for staff to communicate with owners of the building in discussion of a path towards rehabilitation of the building. So other strategies to implement this goal of economic development are listing more properties and districts on the register to position them for the tax credits, developing facade improvement programs, and investing in catalytic projects through public-private partnerships. On July 22, Landmark Commission recommended approval with an amendment to the plan. And on August 4, Planning Commission recommended approval, and staff recommends approval, and we stand by for questions.
Okay, thank you, Nina. And if anyone has questions, again, we don't have a calling system, but just raise your hand high where I can see it. Just one, one hand. Yeah, we can create like a code. If you have two hands up, that means you can't wait. Okay. No, really, though, raise your hand and, you know, we'll call on you. Did you have the hand?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Hernandez.
Okay, so, this is going to be an ordinance, and it has several items within your strategic goals that have significant dollars attached to them that we would require to spend or invest. And I don't know if we, we don't have a budget that, but if we put this ordinance in place, it's going to require us to put in budget. Where do you intend to see this money come from?
Well, the position that we were talking about, the historic preservation plan, or the officer is already in.
Right, and I'm not talking about one position. I'm talking about several items you have.
Well, there are several items that can be funded through the Certified Local Government Program that offers, you know, a 50% match, and that's, that would be primarily like for surveying. It could be, you know, if we needed to develop a structural analysis, we could apply for...
Okay, well, my question, the question I'm leading to is what is the total cost associated with all your strategic plans in here? I mean, you have development of walking tours, public engagement, new profit, new nonprofit organization building, orientation and training for new commissioners, and several others. I'm just wondering, what was, what's the total cost?
Well, we don't have a cost estimate because it's a plan at this point. And so, as you know, plans are sort of worked on incrementally. It's a 10-year plan. And, you know, a lot of this work can be taken, can be done in kind, and let me give you an example of that. So, we've had a couple of neighborhoods approaches about being a historic district, and so, I went to our resource survey, and either there's been no survey of those areas at all to date, or there's been some survey, but it's not comprehensive in nature. And so, the Texas Historical Commission has encouraged communities to utilize volunteers in conducting the surveys of their properties. And so, we could go out, train the community members to undertake the survey of the historic resources. So, you know, there are things that can be done through volunteerism, for example. You know, with respect to changes in ordinance related to Landmark Commission, that's regulatory in nature. You know, that wouldn't require any expenditures there. You know, as far as a preservation nonprofit, it's really up to the council, you know, through the budget adoption process, you know, what the council would like, would like to fund for a particular project.
Let me just add one thing. We're asking for the adoption of this plan, Councilman. This plan will feed into the revision of the ordinance, right? The latest preservation ordinance. Council will then have an opportunity, as will we, to say the things we can include in it, because you mentioned, well, are you paying for this, or what is that cost? We've not seen it, have calculated that cost yet. These are the recommendations provided by the consultant that we hired, and which I think is a great report and a great study. We're asking council to adopt this plan. We're going to come back before council with the, with an updated ordinance, which then we can dot the i's and cross the t's on what are we doing, how are we doing it, where, and how.
Right. And with what?
What, right.
So, this is just, it's a burnside view of what can be.
Exactly.
And then you come back step by step to say, here, in this part of it, we can, we're going to entail the community, volunteers, this nonprofit, this grant, or these funds.
Exactly. So, right off the bat, we can hire, as Nina said, we would like to convert a position for the historic preservation officer. The walking tours, I'm sure that's negligible, but there are some things that will require some money that we'll have to earmark, and eventually we will through the budget process.
Yeah, it's a little uncomfortable approving an ordinance that would, at some point, require you to spend money in other areas that isn't, that is not necessarily defined. Right, it's not defined. And then, you know, and then you have things in here that are kind of policy-oriented. In strategy number 12, you have specifically, action, action items number 39, revise the vacant building ordinance to include building registration process like outlined, or, and they give an example of San Antonio's type where you have, the property has to have proof of liability insurance, you know, and have, and then have renewed annually. Now, I know we had tried, attempted this downtown recently, and it was rejected by council, but you're bringing it back in, in this kind of buried into this ordinance.
Well, again, that's a recommendation. So, if we brought...
But you're making it into an ordinance, right? This is a, I mean, this is an encompassing ordinance, right?
Remember, this is the plan, right? That's going to feed the revision or update to the ordinance. You can, council can pull things out of the ordinance that they choose to or leave an in, right? So, this recommendation, especially the registration part, we're going to add to the ordinance that we'll bring back before this group, and you can say thumbs up on some things and thumbs down. And I want to make sure everyone understands, if and when, and hopefully, you adopt this plan. This is just a plan, right? The plan doesn't do anything, it has no life until I, we update the ordinance that this plan should feed, right? So, and we'll be back to this group with the revisal soon.
And I compare it to like our area development plans. So, we adopt area development plans with numerous goals and strategies, and obviously, in the end, those things will entail expenditures by council. But again, it's a plan at this point. It's not actually requesting funds for that.
Right. Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Michael.
Thank you.
Councilman.
Some of your constraints that you listed, are we being held back only by our city ordinance, or are there state and federal or county things that are holding back these constraints? For example, the 90 days before proceeding and...
Can you turn your mic on, Michael?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, there you go.
So, you have, if the Landmark Commission denies a certificate of appropriateness, the owner is required to wait 90 days before proceeding. The list of all these issues that you have are, is it just the city that's...
It's a local issue, yes.
It's only local. Okay, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman Posley.
Okay, thank you. Well, so, the rest of you wouldn't have to. I read the entire document. And, and so, I want to be really clear, and I've been a real thorn in Allen and Nina's side, and I haven't meant to be, but, and I'm probably responsible for all of us being here this morning, because I went to the mayor and I said, I really think we need to have a workshop on this, because I think it's really important that the council understands what's in this book, and that if we pass it and to kind of dovetail on where Councilman Hernandez was headed, what the cost of that might be. So, first off, I want to state that I am absolutely 110% behind historic preservation. I think it's a great thing. When I was county commissioner, I worked very closely with the Nuasis County Historical Society and the Nuasis County Historical Commission, which are different but kind of the same. And whenever Anita Eisenhower, bless her heart, needed money for putting up a historical monument or whatever, she knew she could always come to me, and I would find the money for her. So, I've been involved in that a little bit, but there are many good things in this plan. But there are some things that I think we need to look closely at, and we need to have a very pragmatic view about and march slowly toward those goals. And so, the council, if we adopt this, we're going to have to come up with an ordinance and pick from this list or this guidebook, if you will, of how we go forward. And even your own survey that this company did, and I never have understood how to pronounce her name, McDou or McDow, or, is it McDou? Okay, I got close. Even their own survey showed that people here in Corpus Christi didn't have a lot of faith in the city's ability to be successful at historic preservation. I think that's a fair comment. And for us to be successful, I think we have to really pick and choose the kind of things that we're going to do to move forward so that we can have some successes. And I'll give you an example, and I've used this many times before. Our heritage park down here, I think, was a really good start and could be a really fine destination point for this city to advertise and show people that we are serious about historic preservation. But we've kind of gone 75% to the goal line. We just haven't quite reached the goal line. And so, we need to very pragmatically pick things that we can have a success, because the city hall's basement is full of programs that had great ideals that are now stacked on a shelf, you know? Vision 2000 and CC90, most of you don't remember that. And, you know, there's been all these different plans that were grandiose like this plan, and because we don't have the financial wherewithal or the stamina to stand behind those things, they end up as dusty books on a shelf. So, and I'll give you a perfect example, and I know this is going to hurt everybody's feelings. The very first thing that lists in this book as a goal for this accomplishment is the restoration of the old courthouse. Well, I can tell you guys, the old courthouse is beyond saving, and I, and I'm going to be the big boy in the room and stand up and say that. And here's an excerpt, a print that I made from the structural engineering study that I had done on that building when I was county commissioner. This was done and formulated in July of 2011, so 11 years ago. And at that time, the estimation for restoration of the old courthouse was somewhere in a neighborhood of $65 million. That's just to get it to a point where you could use it. Now, if you extrapolate that 11 years to today, I don't know where that number's going to be, but it's going to be way north of $60 million. And so, we don't have $60 million. And I went through the whole scenario of tax credits and how that works, and I worked with the State Historical Commission until I couldn't stand to work with them anymore, and they only can give you $4 million a year out of a $20 million budget per project. And they gave 1.3 million to the old courthouse to have the, what I call the east wing, and the engineers call the north wing of the old courthouse. They had the outside of it redone where it looked really nice, but they didn't do anything interiorly to fix it up. So, that, not to belabor that point, but I want us to try to be realistic about what we do here. We have to go through this book and figure out what it is we can do and be a success at. And I think, I think designating some of these neighborhoods as historic areas is a great thing, but we also have to understand as council members, when you do that, what you're doing is you're telling the people who live there, you can't go do anything to your home unless you ask our permission. And people have a great resistance to that, and we have to be cognizant of that. And do we want to do that? And we may vote to do that, and that's okay. But anyway, I just thought it was very important for the council to see this and to understand it. And like I said, I've, if you can see through my notes, I've gone through it extensively, and it's a good start, but we just have to be, and I want to continue to use the word very pragmatic about how we move forward.
Right. Councilman, thank you for your comments. And, you know, the way I look at this also, it's like a menu, you know? And so, I think certainly this council has the ability to prioritize what they would like to see in terms of programs. It's not like all of these have to be adopted. It's more like, these are some of your opportunities you could pursue. And I get you on the courthouse, and it's referenced, along with the theater, actually, as, you know, a possible project that the city could participate in, you know, as a catalytic project for downtown. But, you know, it was just referenced as an example. It didn't say the city must participate in the...
Well, maybe steps are important, I mean...
And so, you know, there are other buildings, you know, of course, our 600 building.
Yes.
The...
Great project.
Building, you know, I'm sure we're going to have more, more prominent structures coming forward for these types of tax credits, and so, the idea is that if we, any way that we could help support these projects, we need to be doing it.
Well, I think also, as I said, baby steps are important, and you mentioned in here the possibility of working together with the Nuasis County Historical Commission to put up more historical markers. And I think that's a good thing, because they struggle for funding for that. It costs about $1,000 per historical marker to put one of those up, to have it made, and then the county public works department would always put it up for us. But I think that's, you know, something we could do. We need more of those. We have a great amount of history around here that we need to recognize. And so, anyway, I don't want to dominate the conversation here, but I just think this is really important for the council.
And Councilman, thank you for requesting it, because it is something that I think we needed to put some focus on specifically. That said, I'm going to reiterate and correct me if I'm wrong. In voting for this, we are not voting to, we're voting, I guess, I'm going to say the opposite, and I think it's what you meant, Councilman, but, you know, community input, neighborhoods, I don't care if it's a sign, whatever. The process of all of this is going to entail not just nine people making decisions to make any neighborhood preservation and making them, you know, have to ask for permission for this or that or the other. This is about the community. It is their neighborhoods, and we are trying to do, as the eighth largest city, something that should have probably already been done, but to Councilman Hernandez's point, to your point, this is something that we are going to go into step by step. This is a plan to adopt, but the details, which I know you're concerned about, and we should be, those go step by step. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And just to make sure, Councilman Posley, because he has met with us several times and has drummed it in our heads about property rights, right? It's always going to come to this body if a group of citizens say, hey, I want this neighborhood to be designated as a historic district. Ultimately, when the Landmark Commission makes a recommendation, it comes before this body, there'll be public comment where people say, no, I don't want to do that, and there'll be comments where people say, yes, we want it.
Right.
And technically, what this plan is, the majority will win a rule, right? So, it's not going to be done in a closet where no one sees it. It'll be public, right? So, but I do understand what you're saying. We have talked many times, so I just want to ensure you, and adopting the plan is not spending one nickel. It's just saying, hey, look, this is the framework by which we're going to look at the ordinance and make, you know, changes.
And please understand, I think, as the mayor is alluding to, this is important, and we have to take it, you know, a slow step at a time, but, and I'll give you one example. I think it would be a terrible sin if, and this involves one of our favorite nonprofit organizations in Corpus Christi, if they were to tear down the Ada Wilson home. I just think that would be a terrible loss for this community, because that's a historic home in this city. Richard Colley was architect on that, and Richard was a famous architect, world-renowned architect who lived and worked right here in Corpus Christi, and I think there's so much tied to things like that. So, I think those are some successes that we could have.
Agreed. Does anyone else have a comment? Councilman Hunter?
Just get rid of the county courthouse. Don't put it in any, don't tie it to anything. Just remove that. Otherwise, I think it's great.
Okay, Councilman Smith.
Okay, thanks. You know, I think the plan matters in words matter. If we've got something particularly in the action items on there that we need to discuss them, there's, what, 60 action items? But if there's some of concern, and I think we need to discuss them and not put them in the plan if it's something we're not comfortable with. in the plan, if it's something we're not comfortable with. Because people do look at the plan on there, and, you know, you mentioned, what was it, action item twelve?
No, it was strategy item twelve.
Okay. And as we get this, it would sure be nice if all the action items were listed chronologically rather than as you're going, well, they are, but, I mean, you're going through the plan to get to them. But I want to have some specific, this is on page twenty, the revised plan, and I think, you know, this is a second cut on this, that there was a lot of language taken out of the plan that would've been great in Seattle or San Francisco. But here's my question, the very bottom on page twenty. The Landmark Commission has eleven members, a numerical composition of which, and this is a quotation, in quotes, "shall correspond to the ethnic, gender, and economic distribution of the city according to the last federal census report," end quote. Where did this quote come from? Page twenty, bottom paragraph, it's on both the original plan and the revised.
Yeah, I would need to look at that, but essentially, the emphasis behind this particular table, it's just illustrating that, you know, we do have a diverse city, and it would, a goal of ours could be to reflect that diversity in the Landmark Commission.
And I have no problem with goals, but-
And frankly, it says, you know, we're on target, you know, as far as proportionality between men and women, and we're on target with, you know, some of the ethnic distributions. But it's just something that we should be cognizant of when appointing, so-
It doesn't say we should be cognizant, it says shall. Shall is a very important word, and are we gonna ask the city secretary, everybody give their W twos, because we shall have half below twenty-eight thousand and twenty-five dollars, and we shall have half of our members above the median per capita of twenty-eight thousand and twenty-five? Words matter. And so, to adopt this where it says we shall, I'd like to say, I'm fine with talking about this, this should be goals, but in quotes, again, where did the quotes come from? Is this in some of our current language? Am I talking about something that past councils have adopted? Or did it come from someplace else?
We'd have to look into that.
Okay.
But I'd like to make a statement, Councilman Smith. Gosh, I wish I could say when we started this process, right? But initially, when we passed this out, I don't know, several months ago, seemingly a long time ago, this body came back and said, hey, look at the language in here, it's just incendiary, we've gotta change that. Which we did, right?
Which we, is very much-
Our second cut, right?
Yeah.
So, if there's additional language, we can certainly, I wanna make sure it meets the intent, but it can be said another way. And what I think that was saying, even though I know specifically it says shall, what it was just saying is, the community is diverse, why isn't the board diverse?
And that's fine, but we shouldn't put in a document that this council approves that says we shall.
Understood.
That's my only thing. All the underlying, I think that's great. It gives us a goal where we, you know, goals to be, but not shall.
And I would recommend, if I need your vote, you can, when you vote to approve, you can-
Make the-
Make it to that section or other sections, and we can do that.
And if we can have, bring some draft, kind of, just like you went from the first one in here to this, I don't know, on that, so you know, and these action items, the sixty action items, where, you know, I'm comfortable with the grand majority of them with it, but, you know, not all, okay.
Okay. Councilman Hernandez?
Yeah, you know, and I'll piggyback on what Councilman Smith said, you know, the shall is, you know, words matter, right? And it, you know, I don't know how many times people from Flower Bluff beat us up outside the head by our A D P and any changes to it. You said, we participated, we did this, and it says shall, and then it just beat you up on the head about it because it was in a document that you approved, okay? And I'm using that as an example, it's just, because it was, it's recent and it's been several times, right? So, you know, anytime you have a document like this, and somebody reads it, and they come to council, and they just, you know, whip it up and say, this says this, you are violating your own ordinance or your own plan, what is wrong with you? You know, you can't have that kinda situation, and, you know, some of these things are somewhat controversial in some aspects. I mean, and to the point of what Councilman Hunter was saying, or Councilman Pusley about property rights, right? You know, and the more that we interfere, there should be some guidance, not necessarily, you know, regulation. That, you know, I guess there are still some things that need to be worked on, and I just wanna make sure this doesn't, isn't used as a weapon against us. Okay? Thanks.
And Miles, sir.
That is a quote from two dash two zero four of our city code that established the-
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Wanna share a little something with you. As I was coming in this morning, I overheard two ladies talking, and one asked the other, oh, your fragrance is so very nice, is it Deep Woods Off or Cutter? So regardless of your choice of brands, I want you all to know that the Corpus Christi vector control is working around the clock, and we will get them all. I would like to thank John Leroux, Christie Toupe, and the United Chamber of Corpus Christi, the entire American Bank Center staff, from the Operations Department, Food and Beverage Department, and the Tech Department. Thank you for your hard work and long hours that you've spent on this event. I would also like to give a special thanks to the City of Corpus Christi multimedia team, and to Zaren Gonzalez with Mystic Entertainment Productions and his team. Next, I would like to recognize my parents, Juan and Mike Delena Rodriguez, my sisters, Amy and Jessica, and my devoted husband, Victor Juahardo. Thank you. It is my honor to stand before my family and before you, the people of Corpus Christi, at my very first State of the City address. I welcome you all with the hope and promise of a new era of prosperity that our council is ushering in. I would like to begin by recognizing your city councilmen, who work every day to serve our city.
Empty Cup, also known as a Styrofoam container, holds much more than just your favorite beverage. While she is safe to drink from, she is made of polystyrene, which is non-biodegradable and can harm the environment. Since empty cup Styrofoam is mostly air, it can't-
...that by doing that, by going back to you and saying, hey, this says we shall do something, I don't think we need that, I think we should do something, I don't wanna be perceived as being opposed to having a diverse, you know-
Understood.
Right. Yeah. Because that's not what it is, it's not that we're opposed to it.
Understood.
So, right.
Okay, Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, that was, what the discussion here is exactly what I was getting at, is if we adopt this at some point here in the near future, my fear is that the Landmark Commission members and everybody around us are gonna say, well, the council passed this, this is law. And that's not what this should be perceived as, and we have to be very careful with that, because just like Councilman Hernandez says, you know, when we pass a plan of any kind and people think that, you know, this is written in stone, and I know your intentions here, but I just want you to understand that the political side of that is the fact that people are gonna come to us and say, well, the council approved this, why aren't you living by this? So-
Understood.
Okay, Councilman, about it.
Yeah, just to beat a dead horse, but, a couple of things. First off, I just did a word search, shall is on-
Can you turn your mic on, please, Roland? It's what? Repeat that, Councilman?
Yeah, my apologies. Once again, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, or that too.
We're beating the dead horse.
Anyway, I just did a word search, shall is only in there six times, okay? Will is in there sixty-one times, obviously there's a lot more context in that. I just think it'd be prudent to do that, because we're really obviously taking it seriously, just like you do, you put a lot of work into it, and we wanna be able to let the community know that, you know, we're committed to this. I mean, I've said I don't know how many times, and I've told both of you that I'm a huge downtown person, you know, I walked around as a kid, you know, surprisingly to my wife, your parents let you walk around at seven years old, but, anyway. But, you know, the other thing is, with regard to the target numbers, this council doesn't reflect that target, you know? And that's the will of the voters. So, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, as somebody that's obviously an advocate for minority business, and, you know, that has been doing that for years, you know, I recognize that, although sometimes the intent, I understand what the intent was, just as you explained, but, you know, we need to really look at it from a standpoint of, you know, once again, this, yeah, the council doesn't reflect that as far as the number of females, we don't have a majority of females on the council.
You sure don't.
We do reflect it with regard to Hispanics. Obviously, we don't have any African-American or Asians on the council. So, I know it's not necessary, and I could tell you, as somebody that advocates for minority business, you know, a goal can be a dirty word on occasion, and the reason being is because, okay, what constitutes that goal? And I've been involved in a lot of litigation over that. So, just be conscientious about it and present us with something that, that, that way, because this is distracting from the spirit of what we want to accomplish.
Understood.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Smith.
Okay, thank you. As long as we're beating dead horses, I wanna go back to the courthouse on there. So, you know, we've got on page thirty-two, and we've got six great things, the courthouse, Heritage Park, Ritz, downtown buildings generally, Art Museum, and the Corpus Christi Cathedral with it. I think Councilman Pusley brought forth a lot of historical background and information on the courthouse, and everything on this page is fact. But, you know, where does this council, if we adopt something on there that has the courthouse front and center with the corresponding language that goes with it? From my perspective, I agree with Councilman Pusley, Councilman Hernandez, I think, brought that up. We know that the courthouse, it is a fantastic building, it's a beautiful building, every time I look at it, I think, what a, you know, when they built that in nineteen fourteen, it's, that neo-Greek architecture on there is great, but it is literally melting or falling down before our eyes and with it. And so, a document, in my opinion, I think there should be some reflections on the economic side, or what Councilman Pusley talked about, that then, we know when we're looking at something, that, you know, we're not saying, boom, there's other factors that have to go, and cost is one.
Input, and that we as a council are not going to just, you know, go and say, well, we can't pass something that is going to infringe on rights of whether it be property rights or whatever. It says right there, 43 people want that Ritz Theater to be a historic landmark, 45 people want Heritage Park, 135 want that county courthouse, now, and so on. My point is, my point is not that it should or shouldn't be, because Councilman Pusley and everybody else who has spoken on it, I understand it, but I think we need to be very careful, because we are now doing exactly what she said you didn't want to do, which is this body say, take this out, take that out, do this, do that, but yet, oh, let's get community input. So we need to be very careful, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you have brought forth what you think should be.
Exactly.
So with that said, Councilman Pusley, I think what you have done today is exactly what needed to be heard. Anyone who has spoken today is what needs to be heard, that's why I am reiterating. Speak now, and what you feel, the shall and the, you know, some of the suggestions we've already given are exactly what they need to hear, because coming back is going to be what we as individually are saying. I need this, or I need to take out whatever it is that you're not agreeing with. When it comes back, I mean, we can sit here and go a year and say, okay, now, but this, but that. We have, remember, it is a plan, and I think the suggestions brought forth today do need to be regarded, but if there are any other suggestions, this is the time.
And keep in mind, everyone, and I'm sure you know this, the county courthouse, the Ritz Theater, whatever other things identify the community, that won't be in the ordinance, that's just, hey, this is what I recommend, we make landmarks, or these are the areas I recommend we turn into neighborhood historical districts. The ordinance will, these things won't be in the ordinance, the buildings, the structures themselves, this is just recommendations by the community saying, hey, these need to be historical landmarks.
Right. So we may need to, for the, I don't know, I don't mean to sound wrong against anyone, but because it's the community input, it should be included, however, we would make, you know, have a discussion as to maybe why we wouldn't be including it in an ordinance.
You know, I used to, I used to do it this way, if people would come to me, they would come to my office and say, when is the county going to restore the old courthouse? And I'd say, well, would you support a tax increase to pay for restoration of the old courthouse? Then you get a different answer.
That's right.
So I'd like to ask those 135 people if they would support a tax increase to restore the old courthouse.
Well, you know, Councilman Pusley, you have a good point on what you're saying. I don't believe that the community understands what's the total cost of these things. They need to be informed. We are aware of what it would cost, okay? But the community, these 135, 200, or whatever it is, I mean, depending on who it is out there, they're not made aware of what the dollar amount, or what is it going to take to restore these things? That is up to this body and this body to inform those individuals or the city, this is what it's going to take. And if they still want it, well, then you need to come up in Groves and say, this is what you want, you know? But I think that's real important, that it's up to us to inform the citizens on these projects that are brought forth, on what's it going to take to restore some of them. You know, there might be some that we can do, they're probably, like the courthouse, you know, like everybody said here, it's a gorgeous building, it's right in the middle of my, central of my downtown, coming into this city. I love the courthouse, but you know what? A hundred million dollars? I don't know about a hundred million dollars.
Or a tax.
You know?
According to the documents, it's a minimum of $83 million, if you include inflation, just to walk into the building. And have electricity and water.
Mr. Raymond, let me ask you this, the, so it's already historic via the county?
Yes. State.
So how would we, well, the state, but through the county?
Through what?
Isn't it, it's already historic? Didn't they apply for it to be historic? That's why it's historic?
The courthouse, the old courthouse, has the national.
Yeah, it's listed on the National Register. It is a state archaeological landmark.
I'm sorry?
A state archaeological landmark, a recorded Texas historic landmark.
The federal government has recognized it as a historical landmark. Now, you can have that removed, if, so, for example, if we decided we were going to, if the county decided, because it doesn't belong to us, if they decided they wanted to tear it down, you can have that removed. Not easy, but you can do it.
Yeah.
It's also been designated by the state as a historical landmark, and I met with the state many times, and I'll tell you just one quick funny story, I went to meet with them one time about what we were going to, you know, what can we do with it? And does the historical, Texas Historical Commission have any money to do it? And they don't, they don't have a lot of money. And the guy sitting across from me that was chair of the Historical Commission for the state of Texas kept saying over and over again that that courthouse was as important as the Alamo. And he said this like four or five times, and finally I stopped him, and I said, sir, Santa Ana never attacked that courthouse. So it's not as important as the Alamo. And so, but, you know, they, they came in and gave the county 1.3 million and some change to do that small restoration on it, and instead of continuing that process, the state just stopped. And that's what angers me about that process, is if they would have come in every year and put in a million, or two million, or three million dollars into that old courthouse, and continued to do the things that they did to the one section, we'd be looking at a completely different issue now. But they didn't, so that building has sat there since 1977, without any air conditioning, without any heat, without, you know, and vagrants living in it, and, you know, it's caught fire inside a time or two that we've had get the fire department to put out. And so there's a whole list of other issues that go along with that courthouse, and, but it does have at least two historic designations, and it has a deed restriction until year 2026 for the 1.3 million dollars.
Well, and that was, that was my question, so if it has, I didn't know, I had two, if it has two, what would, I mean, is it on here because it was part of public input?
Just part of the public input.
Okay, so I was going to say, what would three do?
Essentially, you know, the question was asking the community, what buildings are you, would see as a landmark.
And so, and that was my next question, so was that, was there a list given, or was it people just put out whenever they want?
People throwing out.
Okay. So is Heritage Park already historic or not?
It's a local landmark, and then there are several buildings at Heritage Park that are recorded Texas landmarks and that are on the National Register.
So this Heritage Park with 45 people voting for that, is that a reference to the actual park, or do you think it was a reference to the homes on, you know, all of it, the homes in the park?
It was the area, the whole area.
With the homes on it, right? Got it. Okay. Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions, comments, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes. You know, going back to this, a lot of these things gives us, give us issues with things that are what we consider action items, or words like shall or will, and that's the kind of things we get beat up on. So, you know, I will go, maybe it'd be better if you just give us a list of all the action items that are in there tied to the strategies, and we go through, like, for example, action item 39 is a non-starter for me. So, you know, we can go through and say, you know, these are the ones that are acceptable or not, because those are the ones that we get beat over the head with.
Right. The point being, you would like a list of action items, is that possible to do, to send?
Sure.
Okay.
Right. And so, like I said, it's the ones that call to action, or, you know, say, you shall, right?
Okay. So let's get those sent out, and then we will move this along.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation, thank you for the time spent. All right. There being no further business, I turn this meeting.